Well, you know, I spoke to Virginia today and she said she was going to see me later on, so.
Okay. She's usually a little early, isn't she?
Yeah, but she's probably thinking we're meeting at 7:15, so.
Yeah. We can wait a minute. How's everything else going? In the Senior Center at the moment?
Oh, in the Senior Center at the moment, we are doing great. With what we're doing. Just.
Yeah, at least spring's coming, right?
Yes, yes.
I saw in the paper that the Southbury Senior Center is having a trip in May.
I know, I saw that too, to Mystic Seaport.
And a whale watch.
Yeah. All their plans are tentative, though, and I'm gee, I'm not quite sure. Well. I wish them well with it.
Yeah, I was just surprised.
Yeah.
The number of people that can, I mean, you know, like, you've got a bus of, they can normally hold 60 people, right? Something like that.
Yeah, some of them hold 40.
Are they limiting those buses to 30 or 25 or 20?
I don't know.
It didn't say that in the paper. It just was, sounded like a regular trip and to call them if you wanted to go and that they're gonna have a lunch up there and.
Right.
Yeah.
Because that's, I don't know. We haven't, I've been going to all the state association of senior center personnel. We haven't had just our small, you know, our small group. In a bit, everyone's been kind of, I'll have to see if we can get together again and talk about what all of our plans are. I've spoken to Lauren Ray in Woodbury and they're they're thinking of trying once again to to open the end of April and into May with their very tight restrictions that they had when they tried that in October. It seems, you know, it just seems like it's so restrictive that and things that they're, you know, yeah, they're going to let people come in and play billiards, but you have to have your own stick and you have to bring your own stick. And it all has to be scheduled, which is fine. And I just hope that, you know, I just hope it works for them. They, when they tried what they called a soft reopening in October, they ended up, I think they went for two weeks and the numbers just were not, were not good. So they ended up.
Yeah, well, you know, it'd be worth calling the folks in Southbury or seeing what, you know, did they have, are they putting a limit on it or you know, how are they, how are they managing to do it?
Right.
Interesting to know how some other folks are. Is Southbury in that group that you were referring to?
Yes, yes. But they were, they were very, very, I mean, they were not, when several centers were thinking of reopening in October, they weren't, they had no desire. Because they didn't think there was any way that they were going to be able to restrict numbers. Tabitha said, she said, "I'll have, I'll end up having a riot here if I tell, you know, put a limit on the number of people that can go to an exercise class or any kind of gathering." So, yeah, I'm interested to hear.
Been a long winter and they might be letting everybody in, who knows? You know, I mean, they're probably, I mean, this is certainly covered by being able to move people around the state, right? In a, in a group way. I mean, they can't, they have to be staying within some confines of the state, although the state completely opened up restaurants. So I don't know, maybe buses are, you know, I can't imagine you can make a lot of money without charging a lot of money if you only had 25 or 30 people going or something like that.
Yeah, unless they have additional funding that they're, that they can offset the expense with.
Well, listen, why don't we, why don't we, we could even talk about this later in the meeting if we want, but yeah, I should probably start now. I don't, if Virginia shows up now, I'm sure we won't be that far ahead of things.
Yeah.
So.
I hope she's okay.
Yeah. I'll call us to order and identify all of you with the exception of Virginia. And I'd like to just move to review the minutes and of our last meeting. And I'm going to be very sensitive about that because I took those minutes.
Yeah. I was thinking that when I was reading them.
You did a wonderful job. A wonderful job, you did. Did a lovely, wonderful job.
Oh, really? Hold on, I've got to let my dog in.
Everyone's pets. How's Archie?
Oh, he's just my little buddy.
Oh.
Nying is all get out, but for the most part.
I know, they're like toddlers.
Dog, so.
You love them, but they can be pusty.
Oh, yesterday I was working on a project with Sia and he was so jealous. He just wanted to be in my lap all the time, you know.
Oh, yeah.
And he was not, so.
He gave him somebody else's attention. He didn't like that.
Yeah, yeah, no, he, yeah.
Yeah. Our son rescued a dog and, and I keep on telling him, one of these days that you're going to walk in and that dog's going to have that computer in his mouth and just say, "This is enough of this." He, Chris, the dog, Chris doesn't ever seem to know when it's 5 o'clock. The dog knows.
Well, they're a well-scheduled fed dog.
Right, yeah.
My dogs know exactly when it's between 5:30 and 6 o'clock.
My cats do too.
Yeah.
When it's time to eat breakfast too.
Yeah.
In the beginning, we train them, then they train us.
Yeah, exactly. We know who runs the house.
Yeah, I was trained from the very beginning, so.
So, has everyone had an opportunity to read through the notes and?
Yes.
One of the note taker and can I have a motion to, if there's no questions, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
And can I have a second, please?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? And that passes. By decree. And now we should just go over Linda's report and if we have any questions there. One question I have is we found, Linda, in these programs that we're doing on Zoom, that it's sort of Zoom's moment has started to wane a little bit?
Well, the exercise programs are still doing well.
Oh, you forgot. Virginia's just trying to get on.
Oh, okay. Well, should we wait a minute or shall we go forward? What would you like to do?
Let's let her get on and, you know, let's just keep going. She'll be on in a moment.
All right.
Well, I'm sure there'll be some other questions or we can talk about it for a little bit. But anyway, so how's Zoom going in terms of people wanting to use it, attending things, being engaged by it?
As I said, exercise is going well. People love those classes. They're well done. We've got great instructors. The Roxbury chats really didn't grow as much as I would have liked, but the people who are on are never miss and it's always a lovely, lovely chat. I don't see, no one has yet registered for Geraldine's Five Wishes this month, but it's also scheduled for the 15th, so we may hear from people later on. My, and watercolor, watercolor has gone extremely well and there was a very strong interest in continuing. I have to tell you, I mean, I just continue to be amazed with how much work Sandra has put into these classes so that people enjoy them. And so we're going ahead with another series of six classes. And again, I thank her so much for all that extra work that she's put into them. She's finding it very rewarding. I don't know, some of you may know that her daughter died several months ago, but up until the time that she resumed these classes, Sandra hasn't picked up a paintbrush, which Sandra likes to paint every day. So I think this has been a wonderful experience for her. And it shows because she really is putting a tremendous amount of work into them and I don't know if I mentioned to my delight, one of, one of the students who's been in past classes that we've done at the Senior Center has just, just, you know, I wanted him to understand Zoom so much and it was finally, I went to sign on for a meeting myself and it suddenly hit me, you know? To be more complicated than it is and it truly, you know, it's that one click and and he just, you know, he was doing everything except that, just that one click. So once I convinced him that the one click was, would work, it might take him a minute. Delighted and he's so proud that he's mastered this and he's a very, very, very bright 94-year-old and president of his computer club. So, and he's getting, well, everyone really enjoyed the classes. So while not everyone is going to continue, because some people have other things going on, a very good number are coming back. So I think, I really don't know how the AARP offerings that I've put out there, whether they're being, one or two people have mentioned that they've participated in a lecture that they enjoy. But because that registration is done directly through AARP, I really have no way of knowing how many people are signing on. But I am going to continue to offer them, I mean, the ones that I think are really worthwhile and but I honestly feel that, you know, with the warmer weather and people are getting out more and if people have been fully vaccinated, people are feeling a lot more confident about getting out and doing more things outside of their homes and, you know, so while it will always have a place, I think. And in all probability going forward, the exercise classes that we are doing on Zoom right now, you know, anything that involves physical exertion, like a Zumba or an aerobics class, I'm sure, I mean, the health district has been very clear that, you know, something seated, like a chair yoga class, we could probably try, but nothing, nothing of a Zumba or an aerobics class for the present time. And if, and once they are started, you know, you shouldn't really be doing those kinds of classes that require a lot of exertion with a mask on. So I guess there's, there's difference of opinion.
You know, that's why I've been a proponent of outdoor stuff, because I think, you know, indoor stuff and outdoor stuff are a different animal as far as this, you know, this, this not only the virus, but the way the state seems to be allowing things to go. You know, 100 people can be together outdoors, clearly with, you know, certain restrictions. And we're certainly never going to get to do that, but I think that you know, the, a lot of that restriction that you're talking about is because we've traditionally done these things indoors.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we might want to look at, but that's for later in the conversation. So, okay, but as long as people are using it, I've found in work that people are showing a Zoom fatigue.
Are they?
But, you know, some of those people are doing Zooms three and four and five times a week or more. So, you know, but overall it's, you know, there's, I've certainly heard a number of things about that recently. So I was just curious if it was it all part of our, of our group.
Well, as I said, and I, I think that as we go into reopening, we should probably plan, and I've already approached our two instructors about their willingness to do a hybrid class. Because I think there will be people that will feel comfortable about coming back to the center. Hello, Virginia, how nice to see you.
Forgive me, I totally forgot.
Oh, my goodness, there you go, being human again.
Oh, my God, I totally forgot. And then I couldn't get my speaker to work. So I'm sorry. My apologies.
Well, we're barely through it. We, you could, we're on Linda's notes and having a few questions and so forth here.
But what I was saying, Virginia, was I thought that once we're able to start doing exercise classes back in Senior Center, that there might still be some people who feel more comfortable staying home and doing things at home. And I've approached our aerobics and our Zumba instructors and they're both very open to the idea of doing a hybrid class where they would do the class in their own homes and then, you know, use their, their computers to let us also share the class with seniors who are more comfortable at home. You know, I think, I personally think, and from other meetings that I've attended, I was telling Virginia earlier today, you know, here I am, I've got my slippers on and it's very nice to just be at home and not have to go back out on a cold night and you know, so I think that for some people, I mean, I think Zoom is going to be a good alternative. So.
Yeah, I think, I think for what we're doing, yes, but I mean, as far as activities for the, our customers, so to speak.
Right.
You know, they, they are going to, you know, you just said something about reopening. Is there any news on that?
No, not yet. Not yet. Roxbury's still in the red zone and and the numbers in the state are going in the wrong direction. So but I will certainly speak to Barbara again and stay in touch with her about. I know that the leader of the book discussion group, and we've had some people come back to the group, but there are still people who just don't feel comfortable being on Zoom and Valerie really just, she's just so upset that, you know, these people aren't really able to join the they're just opposed, they don't feel comfortable on Zoom. So you know, we'll, you know, we're going to be approaching that and seeing if perhaps Barbara would like, would let us do perhaps some things outside.
What's the condition of our patio?
We have a beautiful patio. We have beautiful furniture. It's not out right now. It didn't go out at all last year.
Yes.
I think the town is concerned that you know, anything that is held under the umbrella of being an official Senior Center, Town of Roxbury Senior Center function. Like she, Barbara had no problem with our knitting group meeting at the park and a group of seniors meeting at the park. But, you know, she didn't want it advertised in the newsletter as a senior center activity. So.
No, I was just thinking of some of the groups that you would sometimes have hosted indoors. Again, as the weather gets better, would it be a possibility to host them on the patio? You know, weather permitting, you know, and
Right.
we scheduled to do it on Zoom and then, hey, it's a beautiful day, why don't we just the four or five of us go over and do it at the Senior Center if we've made it accessible?
Right, right. Well, I will certainly bring that up with Barbara and, and I mean, I think you raised a very good point. I just need to follow what the town feels comfortable.
Yeah.
Because we have had, like, Linda, we have had the Friends meeting inside the Senior Center spaced apart, you know, this more than six feet apart and we were able to do that inside the building.
Well, that was, you know, that's five people.
Right.
And it's a wonderful five people. So, you know, if, if so, you know, Barbara was very, you know, Barbara is, is very flexible in as much as she feels she can be. So, you know, I asked for permission to do that. One of the board members on the Friends board did not feel comfortable meeting on Zoom and I asked if we could do it in the Senior Center being, you know, six feet apart, being, you know, wearing our masks.
Do we have decent ventilation in there?
Excuse me?
Do we have decent ventilation?
Yes.
I mean, you know, is there, can fresh air circulate in and other air, you know, used air circulate out? I'm sure with the
Yeah, I mean, we
there's that exhaust.
Plenty of windows.
Is there a way to get fresh air in?
I mean, I know that some seniors have, have taken steps to improve their ventilation systems, but and the same thing with adding things to their buses, their their senior buses. Our senior bus has been outfitted, our driver's surrounded in Plexiglas. And only one person is permitted to go at the time right now. So and if that person has a caregiver, then, then an exception is made. But I think, you know, we will get there one day. You know, I think that you know, we're but we're, you know, the likelihood that a lot of the activities that people enjoy doing are just not going to be able to happen for a while. You know, we're not going to be able to eat, nowhere in the state are people sitting down together and having lunch together or anything like that. Everyone is doing, you know, programs similar to what the Friends are doing and there are soups on to go. They call them grab and go or, you know, whatever name they choose to give. But as far as, you know, the proximity of sitting, say, around a table and playing a game or playing cards and especially anything when something is being touched like mahjong tiles or something like that.
But out on the patio might not be a bad idea for like the book club. How many people do you normally have at the book club? Is it like 10 or five or?
It's usually around, well, before COVID, it was about 14.
Oh, okay, that's a lot.
So that is a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot, that's a lot to do on the patio. You couldn't do six feet apart.
You'd almost have to go up to the pavilion and do that.
Yeah, yeah. Or even the contemplation garden at the library. We could, you know, it's something we considered.
Yeah, that's true.
But, you know, and then it's also hard then when you're sitting that far apart from people to hear if you're wearing a mask. So you know, there are pros and cons at this point.
It might, it might be worth a shot, though, you know, but let's say in May or whatever, when the weather, you know, is going to be better.
Right.
Might be worth a try, even scheduling to get at the pavilion or whatever.
Right.
And just see how it works.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because there's plenty of room with the pavilion.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you might, you might want to get, not a permit, but sort of have some claim, although I'm sure during the day that place is, you know, totally unused.
We've been up there walking and there's like, really nobody using the pavilion.
That's what I mean, the inside of the pavilion, I mean.
Yep.
You know, so even if it weren't good weather, you could still hold something.
Right. Right.
I mean, the problem would be people might have to bring their own chairs. You know, there's a few benches there that you could use that are quite heavy, you know, there, you know, those are pretty, if I'm not mistaken, they have a couple of picnic tables there that are
It's a bunch.
They have, you know, big.
Yeah.
And, you know, they could certainly be set up in a way, I'm sure by the town crew to be able to accommodate some of the people in a group, but you probably would need some people to bring your own chairs or be prepared to.
People might prefer that. Yeah. Yeah.
We actually could even do aerobics at the pavilion.
Well.
Yeah.
Well, something to be explored.
I mean, it just depends on what, on what the instructors are willing to do. And if people are willing to go out to travel. I personally think people are looking for excuses to go outside. And they're a little, near-term travel, you know, staying in town and doing something, they'd be much more likely to do than to, say, drive to New Haven. You know, I think at this point. But I don't know, we'd have to try it and see. You know, I, I think at this point, um, but I don't know, we'd have to try it and see. Well, anyway, um, so, so does anyone else have any questions refer, uh, in terms of, the director's report? Everything else seems very clear to me on that.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Mm-hmm.
And do we have any news from, um, the Friends?
Well, we're, we're starting on Supps On April thirteenth, is it?
Right.
Yes.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Remember, we're doing it twice a month, April thirteenth and then the twenty-seventh. Going to do the same system, you know, pick up
Right.
place, place an order and Sharon and Karen Rosky are going to be outside, um, handing out, you know, lunches to people who ordered them.
Yep, yep.
So that should be fun.
Yeah, no, and it, and it gets people out and it, you know, it, it lets people know we're doing stuff too, you know?
Yeah.
People we've run into during the summer or the winter and everything are all looking, when Supps On going to come back? And they were happy to hear, even if it's the, you know, Supps To Go. So people are looking forward to it.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Yeah, how they missed it and everything.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and as you, as you point out, I mean, um, you know, where people choose to take their lunches. And if, if people want to take their lunches and go up to the park and, you know, arrange to meet a friend and, and have lunch together, I think that sounds like a
Go, go Park on Good Hill. Uh, I, you know, I don't know if any of you folks have been on Good Hill lately, anytime around sunset, but there's like Woodstock going on up there.
Oh, it's magical, yeah, it's great, yeah.
And it's just as nice in the middle of the day.
Yes, yeah.
So, but we can't encourage people to eat on the patio at the center?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, why couldn't they eat on the patio if they want?
Well.
You'd have, you'd have to control the number.
Oh, yeah.
Because the Senior Center right now is closed. Just as I, I, you know, I mean, this, this is the understanding that I have. The Senior Center is closed means the Senior Center is closed.
Well, then, we, then leave the patio furniture put away so that people don't think they can stay, I guess.
Right, because that's issuing a, that's issuing an invitation and, and, um, you know, if the town doesn't want us doing that yet, then I think we have to respect that.
Well, and I think too, that last year when people, in the fall, when it was nice, you know, people did bring their lunches up to the park. I mean, there were several groups of people that just brought their, took their lunches and went up to Apple Lane.
Right.
You know, and ate up there, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, it's, it's, you know, just doing it in and of itself, you know, it helps, helps to inspire that kind of thing, given the circumstance. You know, that, that it's getting nice out.
Right.
Okay.
Great, um, let's see here. Where, where am I next at? Where did my, where did my agenda go? Hold on.
Yeah, I'll put it back up.
There it is. Um, okay, oh, so, um, new business. Uh, so I had a very nice conversation with Ken Allen um, uh, this, earlier this week, um, actually yesterday, and we played a little phone tag. Um, he, he sort of put it to me that he would be interested, as long as he wasn't taking, uh, somebody else's spot who, who was also interested in doing it. Um, so unless some of you folks have, uh, some other candidates, I certainly, uh, have no problem going back to Kenny and inviting him to our next meeting if, uh, we're all in agreement on that.
Oh, wonderful, yay.
He'd be a great addition.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, he sounded enthusiastic about it. And, and, you know, again, he was, he was saying, you know, right now we're not traveling, you know, when things start changing, I might be traveling more. And I said, we're, you know, we're using Zoom probably for the next foreseeable future, certainly, uh, for our meetings. And, um, you know, and I said, if you're busy and you can't make it, that's not the end of the world. Just, you know, let us know.
Or like me, like, you forgot.
So I will, I will extend the formal invitation and let Barbara know, uh,
Oh, Virginia, please, don't.
You know what, and I check my calendar every morning or the night before to make sure what I have going on the next day.
That's why I didn't call you, because I figure she won't
Well, you know.
Next, next month I'll call you.
Yes, please, I need the alarm clock, Sharon.
Okay.
I have so many alarms going off from my phone to keep me in my lane. It's ridiculous, please, don't confess to that. So, great, a, a, and, um, so hopefully we'll, we'll, next meeting will be a full skirt.
Oh, wonderful, I'm good.
That would be wonderful.
Yep.
I know that, that Barbara put it out there. We haven't heard from her about, you haven't heard from her about any recommendations, have you? Bill?
No, no, I didn't even know Barbara had put it out there, so.
I know, one of her emailed last, she talked about openings on various boards in town, so.
Okay.
We're there.
All right, well, let's assume the, the position is, well, I, I, I think Kenny serves on another board. So, you know, he, he, he maybe get, leaving one to go on to another, meaning us. Uh, but I don't, I don't know, and that's, you know, for sure, but, um, that might happen, so I'll let Barbara.
That's great news, I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah. Um, he's got an easy commute when we go, if we go back to, you know.
Yeah.
He can walk.
And, and, you know, as far as the other note here, and, you know, at our program, we actually kind of broached that a bit and, and, you know, I, I just encourage you, Linda, and I'll, and, you know, if I speak to Barbara too, I'll encourage her. Um, you know, as just as soon as we can, you know, allow people to do stuff under our auspices, whether it's outdoor or indoor, would be great. And, and I also think if, if we need them to get some fans to make sure we can have the play, the air moving in the place, if that helps, you know, if we don't have that, we should, we should maybe see if we can get that.
Well, I, yeah, I'd, I'd like to hear what the Health District has to say about that, whether, um, you know, what constitutes a, a, um, a help.
Yeah, well, you know, the, the feeling is, is that if people are wearing masks, but the air is staying stagnant, you know, the masks are, are helpful, but the air is staying stagnant, they're breathing the same air constantly. So you've got a little bit of a draft in, in a, or, you know, you've directed some air from one side to another, your, your aerodynamics of the whole proposition becomes a lot different.
Yeah, and there are a lot of windows.
Definitely ask them or, or, you know, see if Geraldine might even have some information on that. Or probably not, I think it's probably not. But the people can help this, because certainly have a point of view about it.
Yeah, uh, Geraldine's got her hands full. She's really, uh, taken on, you know, the, um, uh, sharing of the vaccine information and doing a wonderful job with that, a wonderful job. And, and I really hope you all, you know, especially considering the conversation we had last month about, um, or not last month, what's it, last month or the month before, when we were talking about, um, you know, the importance of our neighbors. Because, you know, our colleagues in Newtown and New Milford have just been wonderful about, oh, you know, sharing, um, vaccine when they have, uh, additional doses to share. So it's important to remember how important those, those neighbors are.
So, um, any other business or, um, comments that anyone has?
Don't think so.
Okay, well, then can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, boy. Sorry I was so late, sorry I was so late.
Oh, Richard, motion to adjourn. Forget it, you know?
And can someone, and would someone, uh, uh, second that, uh, motion? Okay, uh, so, uh, do we, I, we vote, right? To adjourn? I vote to adjourn, are all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Uh, well, thanks, everybody, and we'll be meeting on the fifth, right? It's the fifth of May will be our next meeting?
Um, let me just, just, I'll just
Sixth of May is a Thursday.
Yep.
Sixth.
Yep.
Sixth, so we'll see everybody, everybody then, and it'll be much further along in the spring and we'll probably have had some seventy-five degree days by then.
Oh, everyone.
Never know.
Yeah, all right, we'll see all later, thanks again, and, um,
Take care.
and we'll have our extra member at the board then too.
Oh, yeah, wonderful, that would be wonderful.
Great.
Take care.
Bye-bye, have a great day.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye-bye, everyone, happy Easter if you celebrate it.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye now.
Bye.
Have a great night, thank you, Julie.
You're welcome, I don't want to cut anybody off.
There we go.